With its enforceability. So, Mr. Kelch has taken a look at it and met with Noah Powers and the Law Department. So, let's just kind of, I'm gonna let you take the lead. I know this is your baby. You spent many, many hours on it.
Yeah, so I guess what I'll do is just go kinda like, just write through it down the list from start from the first page. The first one we'll talk about is Section 567.02 definitions. And then on that first page, we have where we start talking about in Item 1, single-family property, I wish there had been four more nuisance activities and one felony drug offense in a period. What I talked to Mr. Powers about was it's kinda hard to warn a property, hey, you might become a nuisance property when our kinda guideline is one event. So, what we're talking about doing is changing that to two, because there's two for each other piece of, kinda piece of property. So, wherever it's one for a single-family property, we wanna make that two instead of one. So, that's something that'll be notated in there, so that would be changed to two instead of one.
Okay, just really quick, the, uh, 'cause the logic, as I recall, the logic of that is what happens if you're, oh, you've had it, you know, you've hit these thresholds, you get a letter, and then you have a certain amount of time to submit a plan. And then if it happens again is the only time any penalties kick in. And the discussion at the time was one's enough. At that point, if it happens again, it should kick in. But that's, I mean, I'm just, that's kinda why it was one.
Yeah, the second one, so there's the one, hey, you're getting warned for it. The second one, boom, you're now nuisance property.
Yeah, unless you've submitted a plan to remediate and a few steps to remediate.
Yeah, like for myself, I own my home, I live there. If I had a felony drug offense, which hopefully I don't have any of those ever, it'd be kinda harder to abate that. But say I rented my house out, I could say, hey, well, we went through the process and we evicted him, so now that person's gone, so, you know, that would go towards abating that problem. Um, and also changing it from any six-month period to one year. And some of the talk behind that, I know, I'll speak from my perspective on it. I know Ms. Hoover has talked to, you know, people at the Health Department and all as well. A big problem we have, and not to say going after people with the grass, but we have a big problem of people that let their backyards, front yards not turn into very hazardous areas for like raccoons, rats, pests in general to breed, and it just gets out of hand. We're not talking about like, you know, Aunt Irma over here that's, you know, 70 and can't get to, we wanna help those people. And the Health Department, Mr. Shelby, he's really good about trying to work with people and see what they need before it gets to that point. We're talking about those repeat offenders that, you know, every summer it seems, we end up having to tell them, hey, cut your grass, because it's just out of control. And moving it to a year helps with that. That's just one instance of it. And it just, I feel like it makes it a little bit more enforceable, having more time versus only a six-month period where things can fall through the cracks. And then, you know, the residents around, you know, they're not getting their justice or, you know, the due diligence from the city, because we only have a six-month window to kinda work with. So, that was a change we talked about, moving it from six months to one year. And then down...
Can I ask you a question about this?
Yeah.
Where it's four or more nuisance activities in a single family, eight or more in a multi, are those all still good?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We didn't change any of those. We're not gonna change the thresholds or anything like that. And then moving down past five, any nuisance activity initially reported to the city by the owner or person in control of the property shall be excluded. Um, 'cause we don't want, I mean, that, there's a note here, good Samaritan, but we don't want people like, you know, something happens, a fight breaks out in your yard, we don't want them not to call the police because they're scared they're gonna get deemed, you know. We're not, that's not what we're trying to do. So, we wanna make sure that, you know, people are being good Samaritans and calling and kinda letting us know kinda things are going on. Um, and then moving down a little bit more from F1 nuisance activities, we had a note, we wanted to add language in to this. I can slow down if you need, Mr. Gary. I think you're following along, aren't you?
These are, Mr. Gary spoke with Mr. Powers today.
Some of these are your notes as well.
Yeah.
Okay. So, F1, assault, aggravated assault, felony assault, missing, stuff like that, we want to have verbiage in there to not include random acts of violence. Like, say, I'm out on my porch, you know, having a cup of tea, and some random kids come down the street and start fist fighting in my yard, you know, and then the cop comes and they, it's not my house that's getting in trouble, because these random people came down the street and started fighting in the yard or something.
So, you mean, so with random, you mean unaffiliated or unassociated?
Yeah, incidents, and well, on my notes are a little better, but I'd have time to run and grab my sheet. But what I kinda wrote down was language kinda stating, incidents is not related directly to the property or anybody associated with the property. So, somebody comes and, you know, say they're breaking into cars and they hide at your house on the side of the porch, and the cops find them, they gotta use your address, that would automatically ding you, and now you, now you got a violation towards this ordinance that you had nothing to do with. So, we wanna make sure that we're protecting people from things like that. Or even like apartment building, say, you know, somebody's out there having some beers and by the dumpster area, and they smash one, and somebody calls the cops, well, hey, this guy doesn't even live here. He's not associated with anybody in any of the apartments. We don't know who this guy is, so maybe that doesn't affect them as well. So, just kinda those things to where we're not inadvertently punishing people that are following the rules and taking care of the properties and all that stuff. We wanna help those people and make sure that we're putting stuff in here to be thorough to cover that. Any questions there on that one? And then moving on.
Noah indicated on, that is, Mr. Powers indicated on 567.02C after five, that the council is also not interested in if the resident is a victim of the nuisance activity.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if they're calling, say, you know, somebody comes to my house and they start trying to fight me and assault me or something, I call, you know, we're protecting that person who is a victim of some crime or some activity as well. Just again, to be thorough and protect people that are trying to abide by, you know, the rules and laws we have. And then moving on to F7, state laws changed.
Okay, just to go back to the F1, you're not talking about F1 as far as random, you're talking about just F, the whole definition of nuisance activity.
Yeah, um, yeah, and on this one, it's kind of bracketed into one, but I believe, yeah, it would consider, it would cover everything in F. You are correct, Mr. Moore. Thanks for that.
Um, and, yeah. Usually the problem goes the other way, where you're trying to prove that, oh, this is a place, that the people around it are always causing a bunch of problems. How are we gonna hold the owner responsible or the person running that business responsible? You know, if there's fights and littering and noise and drag racing outside, usually the problem goes the other way, that it's like, usually the issue is really more the other way. It's got nothing to do with us, I was inside.
Right, yeah, so they're not just constantly using that. I mean, maybe is there a way to kinda add in?
Yeah, to find in the right language and actually apply that is just maybe harder than, but I understand, I understand the point you're making there.
Yeah, well, if there's something that you guys can figure out, that would be...
Well, one thing is if these circumstances arise, we just don't, don't seek this kind of action against them.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some intelligence in applying discretion.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, 'cause there's, you know, you're talking, even for a single family, you need four in a year.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, that's one of those, it's like, how often are you gonna have four car thieves hide in your backyard?
Exactly.
Four people randomly walking by that start a fight in your front yard in a year.
Yeah, I agree. It's, at that point, it wouldn't be coincidence, it would be more habit forming.
Yeah, so that's, but we can put, yeah, we can put, I think we can, it's related, there's something I think we can do with that.
Yeah, well, you guys are the law brain, so whatever magic you guys can work on that one.
Okay.
But if we're good, F7, the law's changed. I'm not familiar with the exact wording of the new law, but it's unauthorized possession, sale, or discharge of fireworks as defined in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 374, sorry, Now, we talked about just removing that, because I'm not sure if the new law fully allows for that.
There are limits. There's certain days and certain things, I mean, there are limits. The question is, is that something council wants to count as a nuisance activity?
Yeah, well, I believe if it's outside of the limits and the scope of the law, I would include it. If we can maybe change the verbiage on seven a little bit, like in accordance with the new code.
Well, we can check that code section and see if that's still butting the state standard.
Yeah.
You know, may have changed the section numbers or added some...
The state basically, I'm sorry.
I think it's now 45, 3743.45.
65.
I think it's now 45.
Oh, see, now that's, that's exactly what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so I think, I think, you know, we can check it, and if there is boundaries and there is laws, maybe include that in the verbiage there, but if it is kind of like, hey, you can have it, you can do it, then take it out, you know, just depending on likelihood of being able to enforce.
The thing that that discharge of fireworks, the state broadened basically how many days that you can shoot off fireworks.
Yeah.
To include the weekend before the Independence Day, July 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
The first day, January 1, Chinese New Year, 5th of May, last Monday in May, Saturday and Sunday after that, 19th of June, which would be Juneteenth, 3rd, 4th, and 5th of July, the 1st, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday before and after the 4th. So, there's still, so these are the only times you can do it. So, it's more times, but it's still not Wednesday, because...
In my neighborhood, most years, it starts in May and it ends in September, is when people set off fireworks, so.
So, are we able to maybe change that wording to, instead of citing this current code, to cite in accordance with the new code? Or do, we don't have to list all that, the days?
No, no.
Yeah, if we can change the wording on that, that'd be fine, 'cause I mean, you know, we obviously don't wanna cite somebody for something that's legal, but we also don't want you doing something that's illegal, obviously. Uh, and then everything else, good, all the way down to 567.04, warning of possible chronic nuisance finding. We're changing that first line in A from the chief of police or his or her designee to the safety service director and his or her designee. Mr. Powers thought taking that on versus the chief of police would be better to manage and make it more streamlined and forced, and he has no problem with that from per our meeting. And then directly on the back of that page...
I'm sorry, where was that?
Um, 567.04, warning of a possible chronic nuisance finding. It's just that first line. Uh, just changing the chief of police to safety service director. And there's a spot again later in the order, it's where it has chief of police, and we're changing it there too. But then going to A1, which is directly after that, we made notes too again where it says one felony drug offense for a single-family property, again, changing that to two, and that's kinda more redundant, it's what we've done before, but going through and making sure we find that. Also changing it six months to one year, that's another redundancy we gotta look after. And then...
So, then all of these are one year, all the way down?
Yeah, yeah. Just a little house cleaning. And then moving down to number seven, a statement that the right to appeal may be available under the provisions of Section 567.06. This is just bracketed, there's not really any notes, but I think, um, what that, yeah, so that whole section there on the back, what we were talking about, Mr. Powers and I, he had a very good point of, instead of having the appeals board and having the appeals to here, they get cited to mayor's court, they come, a findings given, and then they go through the regular already in place appeals process in the appellate courts.
Uh, well...
Like the Muidus Court or whatever it is.
We could designate, we could have a civil hearing officer appointed and make that the mayor's court magistrate that we have, and follow it to administrative law judge to hear the civil appeals, but then the appeal from that would have to go to the court of common pleas.
Yeah.
Instead of, it'd be, it'd be a different process, so we'd have to have a new, we'd also have to add an addendum to the contract with the magistrate that, will you hear these as well? We don't know how often, but we could, you know, schedule for 10 o'clock on Mondays.
Yeah, and I mean, down the road, if we get bogged down or we need to make a change, we can always do that again, but I think, I mean, he made a really good point to me. It was, you know, why take it out of the court's hands, it's already there, and recreate the wheel.
But it's not already, the thing is, it's not already in the court's hands, if this is a civil process, there has to be some form of appeal, but it's not, the mayor's court is a criminal court.
Yeah.
There has to be a separate process for administrative appeals. We could appoint an administrative law judge, basically, Cincinnati's got a boatload of them, that's, I mean, they have them, they have a whole separate system, and that's why that works for them. I think we could, we could appoint somebody, and Walt would probably do it.
Yeah.
I doubt he'd be offended by it, so, but that...
Could you compare and contrast that to having the appeals board that we already have in terms of...
Well, the thing, the appeals board is there because somebody's got, we have to have an appeal process. We can't just do something to it and not have them, it doesn't fit with the zoning board, it doesn't fit with the Board of Health, and it doesn't fit with mayor's court, that's a different thing. And at the time, the administration was, as I recall, we're not gonna send this to mayor's, to the, we're not gonna send it through there. But if we delineate it and we get a magistrate to do it, that would be the process we could set up.
Yeah.
And I think also there was some sense of, well, we want some community members to be able to hear the appeal people that are like coming and saying, well, listen, I've been trying and, you know, doing this and doing that, so, I think we could do that.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, doing something like on that level versus the appeals board, so we're just kinda taking that element out of, maybe this person knows this person or doesn't like this person, making it a little bit more streamlined and fair. So, that would be removing that whole appeals board section. We would leave in, we talked about leaving the next section, 567.07, which is a burden of, a burden of proof affirmative offenses, which kinda just says, hey, what we're looking for, this is what we wanna have happen. If you do these things, you know, you should be good, like a guide to kinda defend yourself. And then again, going on, it's all pretty much the same until we get to the next section, 567.08, impact fees and civil penalties. Talking to Noah, he's like, you know, these levels kinda look arbitrary, like how they're just kinda designed, so he suggested changes to them. So, like for the, once you're already a nuisance property, you have got the notice, and, you know, now each additional nuisance activity, you're getting fined. So, for the first offense, the fine would stay at $150. For the second nuisance or felony drug activity, the penalty would go from, instead of being 300 to 250. And then for the third, it would go from 750 to 500. And then for the fourth, instead of being 1,000, it would go to 750. And then for the, each nuisance or felony drug activity after the fourth, it would just be $1,000 every time instead of 3,000. And the point being, like, if the fines seem too excessive, Mr. Powers' thoughts were maybe a judge can see, kinda view it as kind of unfair and just kinda throw it out, instead of it being more, you know, hey, this is a fair, kind of a fine layout, you know, by the time you get to that, and I thought it was, as I said, by the time you get to that fourth, fifth occurrence, based on this, like by the design of it, you have grossly neglected your property. You have pretty much kinda spat in our face, said we don't care what you wanna do. So, if you get to that fourth or fifth offense, I mean, you've not communicated with us, you've not tried to abate any problem, you're just kind of absentee and just saying, screw it, take me to court, fine me, whatever you wanna do. So, but changing the levels, I had no problem with them. They seem pretty fair to me, they seem pretty good. So, yeah, so we'd be changing those levels, again, the first one, 150, second, 250, the third, 500, the fourth, 750, and then the fifth, and each time after that, $1,000.
Question, how, I took some notes from Jim Shelby when we talked today. He was asking, how, what's the plan to collect the fees?
So, that is a good question. I don't know that we really kinda talked about that as far as, I guess, and if you guys have any idea.
How do we collect fees for other things?
Like, if they come to mayor's court, you get fined, like, I know it's speaking to you, you can go over there and pay, like...
Well, they're not gonna come to mayor's court.
Yeah.
Because it's not criminal.
Yeah.
Um, we can bring a civil action if we need to.
Send them a bill, basically.
Yeah.
Which is, essentially, I think what we do with the, if we mow somebody's lawn, we send them a bill.
And then we assess the property.
Before we put the, before we put a...
So, I think that would be a good process to just kinda chime in with, or not chime in, but link in with this, is, all right, you know, you've been fined, we're gonna send you that fine. And maybe putting some language in, I'm not sure how it works for like, say, we cut your grass and we assess on your taxes, but any unpaid fines or fees after a certain time, assessing it onto your taxes, the property taxes. I mean, what is a fair kind of timeline for that?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, I'll be honest, if somebody's, if we get, if, a $150 fine is one thing, you know, by the point you get to the 1,000, you're, you're already at like, what, 2500, 20, whatever it is, you know, $2,000, $3,000, it's, you're not, it's not gonna get paid. I mean, that's the bottom line, it just won't. It's like, it's kinda like a lot of, you know, some of the building or code violation things. In theory, it's first-degree misdemeanor stuff, and it's $1,000 a day for every day of the violation, but you're never gonna collect that money.
Yeah.
So, put a lien on the property, and if and when, you know, when somebody comes to foreclose on it or they try to sell it, at that point, they have to come to us or they can't get a clean title.
Yeah, so that, that's why I would like to do the assessment on the taxes for that.
Is assessing the taxes the same or different than putting a lien on the property?
That's the same, I believe.
Same thing, it puts a lien on it, yeah.
So, that way, if they sold it, so say I racked up $3,000 in fines, and I said, screw you guys, I'm moving out of here, like you're saying, that would have to be paid before they get a clean.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know how to do that mechanically, other than getting a judgment.
I don't know, I'm gonna look at the, look at the language for the, whatever the grass cutting fees are, you know, and see if, see if we can do that. If not, then we just send it to collections, like we do some of the mayor's court stuff.
Should we have a time, if fees aren't paid within X amount of time, then the property will be assessed?
You could, I, yeah, it's, I tell you, the grass cutting thing is, it's like every six months, they, you know, there's a deadline on how long you have to do it, and so council will get an ordinance that's got, or four ordinances that each have 25 properties that they all assess, so it's, you could, at this point, we've not, I don't think we've gotten close, I don't think we've sent any letters to anybody, let alone issued any civil funds.
No, not yet, because we haven't really been able to...
I don't think we're there yet, so...
That's what we're trying to figure out here, and, um...
I'm just wondering, if what we're trying to do is make this really, really good, is that something that should be included, or is that not necessary? I'm asking my law mate, Mike.
At this point, it's not necessarily required at this point, but we could take a look and see what kinda language we might wanna put in.
Personally, myself, I'd feel more comfortable having that language in there, so that way we do have as much in a row, so we don't have to come back later and try to add to it more. But, I mean, even if we did like something like 6,000, I think that would not, or six months...
We could certainly add theoretically the reasonable cost of collections, including court costs.
Yeah, and I believe we put that in on Section E there, in that, subsection E in that section of, at the end, that are maybe included, or... We did add that they would have court costs, yeah.
I've got a question on C, so right up above that.
Yeah.
For abatement, if the property owner, you know, says, okay, well, I was just in the hospital, I'm gonna cut the grass, how long do we give them to cut the grass? 'Cause it doesn't say.
So, that is a part of the Health Department's process with Mr. Shelby, and this ordinance kind of is an umbrella over the existing ordinances we had, so instead of citing them for, you know, hey, we're putting that thing over, he can now also cite them over for this. So, he goes out, we've worked on a couple of properties where he comes out and I'll give him a 30-day, or a two-week notice.
So, the timeframe would come from the Health Department?
That already existing.
Okay, so we don't need to have a time in here?
No.
'Cause that, 'cause it would be one thing for grass to be cut, it's another thing for siding to be falling off or...
Right, well, the thing, the thing you fall into is repetitive of the same things, and that's something that he said he sees a lot of, is repetitive action or actually inaction on some of the same infractions. But he has a process for that where, you know, I think it's like two weeks, first notice, two weeks second notice, and then final notice. And, you know, he's fair, I've worked with him with individual properties where the owners talk to him and say, hey, I just can't get it done till this time, and he'll work with them and try his best, but oftentimes, he ends up having to give them that final notice and kinda cite them.
So, it sounds like the time is covered under the other items.
Yeah, the grass notice is five days.
Is that the green sticker?
You have five days, you have five days to mow the grass, and if they don't mow it, then he comes back a little bit later and...
But if it's, my porch is falling down, that's not five days, but so, that'd be for the building department, so do they have, they would have a timeline for how long?
Building department, I think it's 30 days is kinda the general thing, and then it's, if we don't hear from you, we may just cite you to court, or if we do hear from you, then we will work with you, you know, they have a conversation.
Okay.
Well, this is what it's gonna take, but it's January, there's no way I can, you know, fix the concrete out, so...
So, leaving it without a concrete timeline is appropriate, because there's such vast differences in what could be an issue?
The, whether that matters is really more a question of how often this is actually gonna come up, because it, you know, part of the question here is, it's four on a single-family home, four different things on a single-family home in the course of a year, and the question is how far are those four gonna be escalated to the point where the regular enforcement mechanism is gonna kick in? They're actually gonna get cited to court, or Public Works is gonna mow the grass, or they're gonna be cited for whatever the criminal offense is, you know?
And I believe what we talked about too is like, so say he puts the green sticker on your door, cut your, that's not one of these.
Right.
Getting cited, 'cause you've not done it, is one of these.
For over the five days or...
And if you, and if you go back to, I'm not sure the page, but it's nuisance activities, and it lists all of them under that, you'll see the codes that they're already cited from.
Which part are you on?
Second page.
The definitions.
Yeah, definitions and nuisance activities. And it cites each one of those codes that these are already under.
Gotcha.
So, it's like, the police department has their stuff, building department, Health Department has their stuff, we're just kind of, kinda bottlenecking it up to one thing we can cite under.
I mean, and again, a violation of the building code is a first-degree misdemeanor, it's $1,000 and six months in jail, every day is another offense. So, in theory, that, the teeth are there. And for the grass, I mean, you don't have to, this is what the, this is what the Health Department does, is they write orders for grass, you got five days, and then the follow-up, but they can be cited, I mean, if your grass is over eight inches, you can get cited to court right there, 'cause that itself is a criminal offense, so...
Yeah, and I mean, that right there is just like the end of all the things that we kinda discussed, and we felt that was necessary to change, not only just to make it more clear, clearly defined, more enforceable, and just overall, like you said, a better ordinance. I'm not sure if anybody else has any kind of suggestions, questions, thoughts?
When we say felony drug activity, are we talking about convictions or indictments?
I would be uncomfortable...
With just indictment?
With anything less than a conviction on a felony drug activity.
'Cause we say offenses, and then in the fine part, it's activity. So, I was just wondering, should we just...
I understand that, and there's, we not, quite honestly, we never did get, the committee and council never did get, what counts? Is it writing the orders? Is it observing it? Is it filing some kind of written report? Is it a conviction? Is it a, you know, specific finding of violation?
So, should we say conviction?
But that's the question, is it conviction?
I think conviction would probably be.
But I mean, for, I would not be comfortable with, on the, especially with the serial, well, for any of the criminal things without a conviction.
So, that would be...
For tall grass, I don't know, we don't get convictions for tall grass.
Under any felony drug activity, do we wanna, we need to change that then, or wanna change it to felony drug conviction? Do we wanna, we need to change that then, or wanna change it to felony drug conviction?
That would be fine with me, so we can.
And that's.
I think activities.
Right at the beginning.
And I'm sorry, Alexis, where was the other one?
Um, on. On F, on the F section, F1, and in the definitions, we say offense, which offense I would normally interpret as.
I would, I would, and I would apply that to F1, F2, F3, um, F4.
Should we have the language be conviction and not offense?
It should be conviction. I, yeah, I would make it clear that way, so. And then the question, what do we do with the abandoned, F9, 10, and 11, which is junk and weeds? And that's kinda the different.
Yeah, so that was actually.
That would be health department, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that was a thing that Jim, um, just had thoughts on. He said, he just had a concern about mixing high level crimes and low level crime, which would sort of be the litter versus the drug offense. Also, individual versus property. So that meaning, um, the, the property, the grass is not cut, maybe that's the landlord issue, maybe that's a tenant issue, versus the individual, the, who's selling drugs.
Well, so I can easily clear that up, and I wish Jim would've called me on this one. Jim? So we're not worried about the individual more than the property.
Okay.
Cause the property is like the base value of where things are happening. So if I have somewhere in my house, and they're selling drugs out of that house, and they get arrested for it, it's my house. I didn't get the conviction, but a known person that I allowed there, and would then at that point have reasonable knowledge of the activity going on, happened at that property, you know? Because my neighbors who are seeing cars coming up all the time, or blocking our stuff, and that, they're not concerned about who the individual is. They're concerned about that property that has become a nuisance.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So that's where you get to kinda mix. I think he's looking at it really, uh, in a, in a, in an odd light there, but, you know, like if he, if like, say, somebody was at my house, they're selling drugs, they were pulled from there, that property receives a ding. That guy's already got convicted, but because I own this property, whether it was a rental, whether it's my house, and this is going on there, and I allowed it, it's now deemed under this ordinance.
So the, the, the time of the, the twelve months occurs from the date of conviction?
Yeah, so like, say they're cited for letting their yard turn into a jumanji area. And they're found, yeah, you did violate this, boom, that offense will be there.
He means if you get somebody that's charged with, uh,
Traffic.
heroin possession.
Yeah.
And is not convicted for a year.
Date of occurrence, I would say.
Date of the occurrence?
That would be more beneficial, cause then you're never gonna get it.
I don't think it necessarily would be more beneficial, because
Yeah, it wouldn't.
It takes, it can take months for these cases to be brought to trial.
Yeah.
And then you've lost your year.
You know law better than me, Mr. Gary.
And then they wouldn't be convicted until, well, cause I just, I mean, you could have, you could evict a tenant, like, who has been indicted, and the, the charges get dropped, and you don't wanna evict your tenant, and then, like, I don't know, I'm just thinking like.
I've had.
I'm thinking of how many drug charges come through my.
Right, but I'll tell you, as far, as, um, uh, CMHA will evict people if they're cited. And I've had people that are, you know, that, that showed up on the first appearance on a marijuana possession charge. You know, they had a couple of joints, and they'd already gotten the eviction notice.
Right.
We'd not even, they'd never been.
And I don't wanna like encourage that, if that, you know, I don't want like someone, people who get weed tickets getting evicted, out of fear of getting charged with the nuisance property. Cause you have like a concern.
Well, there is an allowable amount that you can have without getting a ticket.
I, I know, but I'm saying.
So, in my opinion, and I'm, and I'm pro weed and whatever they're doing, but if you have more than the allowable amount, it's illegal.
This year, and I will say.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not worried on like, I'm not trying to, oh, I don't want people weed tickets getting busted.
But I'm saying, like, if neighbors don't like it.
Is it the law, or is it, is it on the right side of the law, or is it on the wrong side of the law? That's what I'm worried about. So if you have a gram under the allowable amount, you don't get a ticket. If you have a gram over, you get a ticket.
What they're talking about. What I'm hearing is the issue is, being cited happens in May, but I don't go to court until November. In November, maybe I'm found not guilty, maybe they drop the charges, so that citation is.
Well, what I was saying is, is we were talking like, from the date of the conviction, or the date of the occurrence, but I was saying, it wouldn't be from the occurrence without the conviction. But what Mr. Gary's saying, that would kinda not be beneficial, so we should do it from the date of the conviction.
I would think so.
So we're not losing that year, and that's what makes sense to me, and I'm fine with that. Um, yeah.
Do you think there's a challenge with that?
I don't think there's a challenge.
You're making a face, I wanna hear the face.
I think the problem is that you have some people that like show up for court, and, you know, it's taken care of immediately, and some people that you, that you don't see them for years, and they get re-sighted, and then they don't come back until they, you know.
Where they capius, or whatever.
Yeah, exactly, they capius over and over, and you never ever get a, you never get a resolution on the case, and so those are the ones that, which you're not gonna have the conviction anyway. I'm just saying that, and the date of the occurrence is when it's actually happening, and that's when it's being a nuisance, that's when it's causing a problem. If it's a year later, if it's nine months later, it's no, that's.
That, that's, that's why when we did this, Mr. Dracy and I were trying to do it from, hey, you get pulled over, you got heroin on ya, you get arrested, that is what we wanted it to be, boom, that's what gets you. Instead of the conviction, because like you said, you can go down those rabbit holes and those long hallways of never ending justice, and the neighbors are still dealing with it, cause the guy's out on bond, he's still doing the same stuff.
And, and we can do that, it's just drawing that line between, okay, I have seen a bunch of people come into the property, and so every time somebody call, you can't have it so that every time somebody calls, police said, hey, I think they're over there selling drugs, that that counts.
No, no. I'm saying, say they have somebody, they think they're, they, they're selling drugs out here, I just watched a drug deal go down. They're outside, the cops pull up, they have reasonable, whatever, to, to check them. That guy has, like, say heroin in his pocket, he gets arrested, boom, I mean, open shut case, Johnson, you know?
Or Tim, what do you think we do?
I think we could do it that way, if it's challenged, and if they.
For the criminal, we could do, the date, as far as counting up nuisance activities, we could do this count, you've been cited, you've been charged with this.
And then going down that rabbit hole, if they are found not guilty, then it can just fall off.
And at least that's something that can take into consideration. It's a possibility, just as far as the notice goes. I'd have a hard time issuing a fine to somebody based on they were charged with something. But, you know.
Yeah, it's trying to make this work. Let me get back to. To me, I feel like it's, it's a double edged sword. You know, cause I understand this was what you're talking about, and I understand kinda what he's saying, but it's like, for me, it's like, that's, nuisance activity happened, it occurred, you know, now we gotta wait for this to be resolved, and in some cases, um, we've had, I'm not gonna mention here, but, I mean, we've seen where they get out and they continue to do the same thing. You know, so there's no one great way. I feel like that is the end all be all way, but I, I feel like we gotta find the best way. And, you know, maybe not necessarily the safest way, if it gets challenged, then we gotta change it, you know? But what is gonna make this ordinance clean, usable, and
Well, I'm thinking.
Do what we want it to do.
Yeah, I think long term, if you want it to be usable though, we're gonna have to pick like what a drug offense is, and what drug activity qualifies as.
I mean, and, and, and I'll be honest, I, I put, I'm of the, uh, I'm of the, uh, school of thought where my neighbor or somebody right there by my house, you know, they're doing dumb stuff out in the front yard, say they're fighting with each other, and they get arrested, boom, that's, you did that. You got arrested for that. You know, now you might get found not guilty for whatever way, you might have a fancy lawyer or whatever, but that's still happening, and then if you do get found not guilty, then it'll go away, but if you don't, it's gonna.
What if the consequence has already happened?
That's another concern, like, what if we get really reactionary landlord responses? And people who may just have a drug problem are being thrown onto the streets is another concern.
Or a unlawful arrest.
Yeah.
Well, when I got my kid next door, and other people got, you know, or I got my kid in my house, and somebody next door has a drug problem, I'm sorry to hear that for them, but when my kid runs the risk of playing with needles, or something they're leaving around, nuisance.
I mean, that's possible, but I'm just saying.
And, and there's other people in the city that are gonna have the same thoughts, you know, and, and, and yeah, I mean, I, I feel bad for them, we should get them help, but that's not what we're doing here. This isn't a, uh, drug, um, help ordinance.
Potential impact of the consequences of this.
Yeah, I get it, but, but, you know, when you're, when you're, you are a drug user, you are addicted to whatever, yeah, I get that you need help, but you are operating outside of the law.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we say it's okay to be, my, what I'm saying is, what if the, let's say the arrest was an illegal arrest?
Then it, then it would not count, then it would go back and not count.
Right, but what if my landlord has already kicked me out?
Then the landlord, then the landlord would show, you're, you're talking about you individually, again, we're talking about the property. Say, you know, for me, I own my house, I own my house, so I get arrested there for a drug ordeal, right? I can't evict myself, so
Right.
I'm probably gonna end up being a little screwed, okay? This property manager back here, say he's got somebody that's arrested, cause they're dealing drugs out of there, as soon, and like, he was saying some properties do, as soon as they get charged and they arrest, boom, we're giving you, we're sending you eviction papers. That landlord then brings those, says, hey, that knucklehead's outta here, he's gone, he's gone. That is in the abatement process. That shows that that falls off.
I'm just trying to balance people's personal rights versus the, are, the community's safety and property. So it's not, I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying we have to pay attention to how these things are intermingling.
Yeah.
Because I, I just, I'm worried about those more one-off, five-off, where it's, someone isn't really doing drugs.
If we look here, under the five, five sixty-seven oh seven, burden proof, affirmative defenses, number two. He or she has, has, she, he or she has knowledge of the nuisance activity, but has promptly and vigorously taken all action necessary to abate each nuisance, including, without limitation to compliance requirements of H I R C.
Well, so what it is. I think the point Susan's making is, I live in an apartment.
Yeah.
And I am arrested, and I am illegally, improperly arrested, I didn't do anything wrong. Because of this, my landlord's not taking any chances in evicting.
An eviction stays on your record for ten years.
So I mean, that, that's, 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 I'm just saying, that's the concern she's bringing up.
I mean, what is, what is our stats? You guys are a law department. What are our stats on false drug arrests?
I have no, the drug arrest, the drug.
Because I feel like we're talking about something that could possibly happen.
Yeah.
But are we talking about something that happens all the time?
I don't know that it matters, cause if I'm the one in a million, and it happens to, and I get illegally evicted, and it's on my record.
Every ordinance that we have on file is something that one in a million chance, somebody could be screwed by it in the wrong way. Why do we have it? Why do we have our government? Why are we here creating these things that could happen to anybody in a one in a million opportunity?
Why we're trying to make sure that it's good.
I understand that, but we have to have a reasonable expectation that people are gonna do what they're told, and, and what they're supposed to, and abide by laws. Anybody can be, like I said, can be messed with by any ordinance we have, not one in a million scenario, but without them, we have anarchic chaos.
I don't.
And eviction, and eviction is the product of illegal action anyway. That is, you gotta go, you gotta go to a judge to get an eviction.
And prove that something happened.
Prove that, that the terms of the tenancies have been violated.
Which, then they would have their own set of circumstances to say, hey, well, this guy got arrested, maybe looky loo Susan over here in this, not, not to use your.
A different looky.
In this, in this apartment seven B doesn't like, uh, Johnny in apartment seven A, and called the cops, now he's going to jail. Well, that's not enough to victim, you know? I don't, I don't, maybe they have their own set of circumstances.
I, I think one of the, one of the issues when you do an ordinance like this is, is that you, you run through the eight million possible ways that could apply to somebody. And I think the bigger question, and I, I've always said this, I'll say it again, is what are the things that are most likely to come up? Cause that's one of the questions I had for you, Chris, is did Noah say what his mechanism, what his mechanism is going to be to know which properties we're talking about? Which ones have had these nuisance activities?
And that's something, yeah, that's something we gotta try to figure out, is how we're gonna track them, is there a software that does this? Do we create our own kind of tracking system on like a Google Doc, which I think would not be good? But, you know, things that can be done. Is there a software that can, you know, track this, and maybe possibly be used for maybe another department, so we're not just kinda throwing a lot of money at one thing? We're kinda taking care of multiple things, you know, and that's something we gotta find out, um.
You know, and then the, the other approach to this is to figure out which properties are the worst, and why, what are the reasons? And then focus the ordinance on that. I don't think, nobody's getting arrested for fireworks in Norway.
Right.
Just, it's not happening.
But we do have a lot of drug use, we do have a lot of drug use, we do have a lot of drug sales.
I don't know how many drug arrests are happening in order either, so I mean, that's, I just don't know. I know that, I've had issues, and nobody from those buildings were ever arrested, they left. And so that's the way that was resolved. There are some, but I'm not sure that that's, because making a drug, you know, an arrest at a drug house is a really, really hard thing to do. It's really, really hard.
I mean, yeah, they gotta do their, their, their investigations and all that.
But they get, or they get picked up somewhere else, and it's just one of those things, is that's, that's another way to approach the thinking about it, because we don't, I don't know. I, I, I have no idea what the things are that are gonna go up the pipeline as, okay, this place has had four violations, this apartment building's had eight, or this one's had ten, um, or whatever it is to do that. There are, there's a handful of them. There's, there's a number of property maintenance places that, the more letters we send to the owners of those, the better. Um, I don't have a problem with that at all, and fine, slap them on, they're, they're absentee anyway. But when you get into the criminal stuff, it's, it's things like the bars, that there are places that, you know, that have been, Suppy's was a huge problem. I mean, there have been places that just attract stuff.
Yeah, and getting shut, shut down, or closed.
Or the skate, you know, the skate factory, that was, you know, the, the fun factory, the skating rink, that was a horrible.
Like, I, I just don't wanna.
Those kinds of things, that's, you know, it's fine, whatever, whatever you wanna put in here is fine, but I think most of what the things that we envision, I, I don't see going through the pipeline.
Yeah, I, I just don't want, I understand the, the, the civil, or the, 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 the personal aspect of this, but this is not a personal ordinance, this is about property. It's about properties that are nuisances and becoming nuisances. And there are things built in for those property owners, be it a owner occupant, a rental property, a commercial property. There are things in here built in to abate the issues, to not have these, um.
Yeah, abatement wasn't what we were talking about, though. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're, we don't.
You're not gonna, I, I, I get that, but I mean.
Have you talked to Kramer about what the top issues are when you guys were first working on this?
Um, that, I, I'm not sure if we did. He was here in a couple meetings, and he kinda talked a little bit about what they do, or what they see. They had something similar years back. Um, that guy's now a detective that was running that, or kinda tracking that, so I'm not sure.
So we definitely need to have them put eyes on this as well?
Their, our eyes have been on it. I'm not sure exactly what, yeah, I'm not sure exactly what opinions they have. But I'm just, you know, yeah, I understand I have a too heavy a hand. I think what we've done is really softened this thing up a lot, just what we've done here today. I mean, even just with the fines, adding another felony drug offense to single family houses, where if you have two a year.
Yeah, but the year makes it harder. The year makes it heavier.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's expanding.
Yeah.
But two, two, you get a letter.
No, one, you get a letter, two, you're a nuisance property.
Oh, no, no, for the, for the, yeah, for the drug offenses, yeah, for one, if you have a felony drug offense in your house, and then you get a letter, I'm thinking that may not be a high.
By the time you get to the maximum penalty, you have had over eight occurrences at your house, if you're a single family in one year. If that is you, and that is happening, there's, you, no way that you're ever gonna convince me, and probably even a judge, I'm not a lawyer, but I would say that you are not a nuisance property. You've had a history of repeated incidences, you know? Like, this is, I mean, we're talking heavy hand, man, I feel like we're slapping people with a feather sometimes, in some aspects of this.
Well, you brought up a heavy hand, we didn't.
Susan did.
You said lightened, you said you lighten.
We lighten this a lot. This is definitely lightened.
One thing I didn't see was noise. Did I just miss that in here? Cause I feel like that should be in here as well.
Disturbing the peace is in there, and some of those offenses.
Okay, I think our no, noise ordinance is separate from disturbing the peace.
Yeah, noises, you can hear it from fifty feet away, which is, you know.
Not subjective.
That's, it's not subjective, you get a tape measure, and if the officer can hear from fifty feet away.
But I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm talking like, you know, unless we're sending our cops out with like tape measures.
Well, it's like, if they're standing on the street, and they can hear the music blasting from the backyard.
Yeah.
But again, it's a, it's a subject, how do you know?
Fifty feet from the property line is a violation of the noise ordinance.
But what I'm saying is, so if I'm a cop, and I'm standing on my sidewalk, my yard might be more, closer than fifty feet. I'm saying the, the judging of that distance without actually measuring it first is. actually measuring it first is subjective, is what I meant.
They measure it.
And they testify that they measured it.
Testify.
Well, there we go, then, then that, then that's more than I thought they did.
And they measure how much light comes through tinted windows, and they testify what percentage of light...
If they do that, if they do that, then, then A-OK, but, and that's really all I have as far as...
I would like to have the noise specifically, because the disturbing the peace is not, is separate in our ordinance.
So you'd have to add it to section F.
Sound systems in there, so, F2, we just add the noise, whatever the noise, or...
That's a good idea.
Is that separate from the disturbing the peace?
Yeah, because I looked it up the other day, I was surprised that it was two separate ones.
Five oh nine oh nine, or something like that.
But that one does also have all the other good things that go along with unruly loud noise, so, might as well.
Both, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's the disturbing the peace. And that's one of those, like, the noise is one where it's hard to get cited for a noise violation, you really have to go out of your way to actually get cited for it, you have to really be annoyed, repeatedly.
Five oh nine... Five oh nine oh nine is disturbing the peace, includes the operation of power tools, um, loading and unloading vehicles, loudspeakers, horns and signaling devices, promotional sound or music producing devices, televisions, radios, electronic sound devices, outdoor equipment, unreasonable noises, exceptions, so it's five oh nine oh nine, which we can... Pardon?
Uh, yeah, that's what I thought, so, yeah, so it's in here, disturbing the peace is defined in chapter five oh nine, so...
Right.
The language is broad in this ordinance.
We can just say violations of five oh nine oh nine.
Well, and it's, then it's pretty much all of five oh nine.
Or are you talking about that, or are you talking about the actual, like, north ordinance that Norwood has, like, after eleven?
It's twenty-four hour. I'm looking for it right now, I can't find it.
I was saying, because I, I've looked at that before.
I found it the other day, because I was like, why are there two? But now I can't find it.
There, there might be another one, I don't know.
I thought there was one, just like Norwood, we did, that is...
Just music, and it was twenty-four hours, and I can't find it.
It'd be in five oh nine.
But it does look like five oh nine contains it, so...
Well, there's...
Maybe under building code?
Yeah, I don't know, where else would it be? If that's not it, so...
It's, um, the operation of any radio set, musical instrument, or other machine or sound device in a manner to be plainly audible at a distance of fifty feet, from a vehicle or a distance of fifty feet from the lot upon which the building or structure is located shall be a violation.
Yeah.
That is it, that is...
Oh, it's down here, okay.
I think adding that is, is more than reasonable, um, or was it F2? Yeah. And that's already in there, five oh nine, chapter five oh nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's already in there, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's covered in the disturbing the peace.
All right, well, shall we make these changes? I feel like, um, do you want to talk to Kramer, do you want me to talk to Kramer about what he thinks about this?
Either, or, um, I mean, I can always reach out to him, I can go in there tomorrow and kinda see if I catch him and that, but, um, like I say, he has looked at it before, he did give us some comments before, but that was over a year ago.
Yeah, I think some fresh eyes with the new changes would be helpful.
So we can do that.
I'm sorry, with six months changing to a year period, you're not doubling the amount of calls to go double the amount of time, you're taking the same amount of calls?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
That is a big change.
Okay, do you understand why we made that change?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, can you double?
Absolutely, so the issue was, if it was six months, you had to have that many calls within six months, so let's say you had three calls, and then nothing, and then the six months is over, so it's clear, and then six months, day one, noise again, or grass, or drug, so if it's a year, they have, it, it makes it more, they're more likely to get...
We're giving the city more time.
Getting hot, because they have, you have a whole year to accumulate those, so...
Yes, to make the arbitrary change from six months to a year.
It's not arbitrary.
Well, it seems like a pretty big change to me.
There's a purpose, it is a big change, it is a big change because...
Do you want to come to the, um, do you want to come to the microphone and tell, just say your name?
Well, I will just...
Okay.
This is a big change to me, are you going to open this back up to public comment again, before this is finalized and passed?
Yeah, it'll be, uh, in council.
This is the, this is the committee where we're talking about...
I just wanted to make sure that I can raise my, sign up properly and raise my concerns then.
Okay, well, what would you, what are your concerns about the six months versus a year?
I just think that's, you need to double the calls, and you're gonna double the amount.
So you, so, uh, I, I know your boss, your boss kinda worked with us a lot, putting us together, um, and, let me just say, fifteen, is ten-plus unit buildings, and is that what you were kinda worried about, right?
Yes, it is.
And fifteen, fifteen or more nuisance activities, and two or more felony drug offenses, even getting that many in a year is not a very good building, if we're doing that a year...
I would agree, but they're not convictions, but it's...
That's what we are doing, convictions.
For drug?
Drugs.
Regular nuisance, it's convictions for all of that as well?
No.
I think so, it's just gotta, gotta call.
So let's, let's...
And citation, citation, yes, thank you.
Yeah, so we...
So that would still be more than a call.
That is a conviction of a citation, is you are cited, you're caught speeding, you're cited, yeah, like, yeah, so those things, I mean, more than fifteen of those in a year is a lot, you know, so I don't think it's an arbitrary change, I think it's a good change, uh, because we do, what we have kinda seen a lot is, especially with yards, is a big one, right? Where we have, this guy doesn't wanna cut his grass, and it starts growing way up, you get rat infestations, gophers, and, and these things are huge, I've seen them in people's backyards, and they're very, quite alarming to me, you know, when you got kids running around, I've seen one in person, and it's that big, it's huge.
I'm not coming to your house.
Like, but, some of these yards I've been to, and it's like, we've had it to where, over the three and a half years I've been on council now, or three years I've been on council, where every summer I've been in the same yard three times, where we have to tell this guy again, cut your grass, you gotta maintain this, so with six months, it doesn't do a lot to keep the enforceability of this up, um, so, I mean, that is something we've talked about, like I told you, I, we spoke outside briefly, I said we are not changing the limits, but we are changing it from six months to one year.
And that really changes the limits, because it's over a much longer period of time, in my opinion.
So what is your concern with that?
I just think it's unfair to the larger unit buildings, the thirty-plus unit buildings with lots of lower-income tenants in there, that I think it unfairly targets.
Low income doesn't necessarily make you a criminal.
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
So your concern is that the lower income, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you, your concern is that the lower-income properties are gonna be potentially more likely to get these dings?
Yes.
Okay, and so having the fifteen...
With the extended period of time.
So fifteen in a year, you feel like that's likely that some of these buildings could meet that criteria?
It could, yeah, that's about one a month that could happen.
Okay, and how do you feel with the abatement piece too included? Did you catch the abatement part?
Yes.
So if you get, so if there's an issue with the tall grass, and then you mow it...
Within the specified time, so say, say, say our guy comes out, and he says, hey, you guys, the grass is out of control, you gotta mow it, right? Your property manager, you're gonna get somebody right on that.
Absolutely.
Doesn't apply to you, because if, unless you say, you know what, we're not doing that, we're gonna wait, now we're getting cited for this, that's a ding, okay? Just because they come tell you to cut your grass is not a ding, I tried to explain this to your boss several occasions, that that does not count as a ding, you have to literally go a whole month, pretty much saying, we're not doing this, don't come here, we're not doing it, and then that would count as a ding, and then our other things, I mean, we're talking aggravated assault, menacing, we're talking inducing panic, inciting violence, um, drug offenses, um, compelling or promoting prostitution, you know, we're talking gambling, public gambling, we're talking, um...
All the other things that are also...
You know, abandoned junk that's left there again, over that time, that the health department allows in the ordinance, so if you're doing those things, and you're getting cited for those things more than fifteen times in a year, buddy, you're a nuisance property, I mean, that's just how that is, I mean, I mean, I understand the, the, the concern that you have, um, and I could, and you can let Mike know, I will call him, and we can talk through this at a later date.
I'll let him know, because he's gonna have concerns.
Yeah.
Are there specific issues that you think will be cited in properties you're aware of, maybe not yours, but just in the community?
Not exactly specific examples, just really anything, tenant issues, argumentative violence, any stuff like that, that one tenant may call, like you were saying earlier with the Lucky Lou tenant calling the police about their neighbor doing X, Y, Z.
And if, and if the police come out, and they don't find anything is wrong, then who is cited for what?
Okay, good point.
I told Mike this, I said, just because you get a call there, doesn't make it a nuisance violation, no word in here to say police called on you.
You're right, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Not a problem.
I'll let Mike know to expect your call.
Yeah, I can give him a call, or he can call me, he knows that.
Yep, I'll let him know.
Thank you.
Any other questions you have, feel free to send us an email, we wanna make sure that, because this is gonna be for all of us, we wanna make sure that everyone's voice is heard.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. So do we wanna go ahead and schedule a next meeting?
I think, I think, I think we would have to, I think, because we got so many changes that they had.
Would you go to do it now, or do you wanna wait until after you've met with Kramer?
No, we can, we can do it now.
Okay. I think you have perhaps the most complicated schedule, so...
Um, Wednesdays, I'm pretty free.
How much time, will you give yourself, like, three weeks?
August seventeenth, is that reasonable? It's two, two weeks.
Do you think you'll have time?
Yeah, I can meet with Kramer this week, as long as he's okay.
Uh, law department, does that give you time to get some thoughts together? Okay, what time would you like, Mr. Kopp?
Um, six thirty, seven thirty.
That's the new yoga.
Can we do seven thirty?
We could do seven thirty.
Seven thirty? No.
Six thirty's better, we get home, you know what I mean, it's...
I know, but I wanna go to yoga.
August seventeenth, I think, will be a board of zoning appeals meeting.
Oh, VCOV, is that Wednesday?
Yeah.
VCOV up there.
Oh, okay.
Well, what if we do...
The eighteenth, I've got a community meeting on auxiliary dwelling units.
Do the twenty-fourth?
I can do the twenty-fourth. I've got a community meeting that night for...
Oh, I thought you said the eighteenth.
No, the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
And that Tuesday's council, Thursday's community.
Yeah, I mean, if we gotta do that Thursday, that's fine, just the eighteenth, we can do that, same time.
Thursday, the eighteenth?
Yeah.
I can do that.
Six thirty then?